Before we get any comments, I would like to call for an extension of fifteen minutes of the meeting.
Motion to extend the meeting by fifteen minutes.
Support.
So moved.
All right, the motion was made by Trustee Barry and supported by Trustee McDonald. Roll call, please.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Deambrosio?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Mozop, yes. Trustee Petlicov?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President Thorpe?
Yes. Trustee Barry, you want to kick us off?
You sure about that?
Sorry if I just put you on the spot like that. I thought you had it up.
No problem, no problem. I mean, uh, nobody at this table will argue that our teachers are heroes. They serve our district. I mean, everything we heard tonight is no surprises. I have, uh, five children that graduated from different public schools. They're all doing very well. I have three grandchildren, so I, I live that life. I am very thankful for what teachers do every day. All of our staff. A gentleman mentioned earlier the resignations. When I first looked at our agenda and saw the resignations, it literally broke my heart. And these are names, not just, you know, ink on paper. These are people I know, people I've been communicating with the last couple of years. And I knew they were on the line, but to see them actually resigning, you know, science teachers, math teachers, social workers, that's, I mean, it was a heartbreaker. This is not the first time. This has been, this has been going on for a while. There are some things. For the past decade, I've had tens of teachers that are friends or teachers that become friends reach out to me. And I always say, you have to step up to the plate and speak. You have to, you know, bring it to our attention. You can't just, you know, have a conversation with me and think that I'm gonna be able to do, you know, what you, you need me to do. You need to step up. You need to talk to your, your, your colleagues. You need to talk to your union leadership and bring somebody's attention to the superintendent and to the board. But unfortunately, uh, you know, that usually didn't happen. But tonight, October eleventh twenty-one, I guess I can, I can safely say that train has, has left the station. With, uh, and I applaud, I applaud people that have the courage to come up and speak at the podium. I, you know, I, I really do. I mean, this is just amazing. It's easy things to say, to, you know, to, not even, I, I don't, I don't like to use the word complaint, but the easy thing is to speak up like in, just, you know, like with, with a friend or whomever, but then just let it go and just move on like, like nothing happened. Unfortunately, what brought us here tonight is an issue that's not gonna be easily solved. I mean, I, I sit here and just think about it. I talk to my colleagues. It, I talked to Dr. Malakal looking for answers. It's not gonna be something that we're gonna come up with answers and I, but we're gonna continue this discussion, hopefully. One of the young ladies that spoke earlier, she did mention that she resigned a couple of weeks ago and stepped up to the podium and gave us some of the reasons, which reasons I've heard before from many people, from many teachers that have left the district and work in not just neighboring districts. Some have left, uh, the, the profession to, you know, work in corporate America. But, uh, Dr. Malakal, I know we have to respect, you know, the union leaders, but I would like to see you maybe have a discussion with, uh, union leaders and address some of these issues. If people that no longer working for us are saying, these are the reasons why I left, they truly feel this way. These aren't just, you know, made up things. So, um, the young lady had a long list. I'll just point out some of the things that I heard stood out. Lack of respect, lack of trust, and a school district with, uh, with a, you know, with a fear culture. Fear, fear culture. If somehow, some way, we can open up a line of communication, Dr. Malakal, she mentioned something about maybe putting a committee together. We need to, we need, we need to hear from our teachers. We need to hear from all of employees if this is, if this is tr- truly how they feel. And I have no reason to say, hey, this is not true or true. This is how they feel. We need to address it. Need to get to the bottom of it. Uh, she not, not one time she, she mentioned compensation or she resigned for because of money. She just felt, again, disrespected, not trusted, like her voice didn't matter. And just for the record, I've spoken to this young lady many times the last few years. This is, this is not something new, the way she felt. This is the way she's felt for a long, long time. I have a lot of friends that have left this district. And there's nothing I can do. I mean, I'm, I'm currently talking to a few, uh, few of our employees and I, and my recommendations are always, hey, you gotta do what's best for your family. I would love for you to stay with Dearborn, but reach out. Talk to people. Talk to your directors. I know one way that's, we're not gonna solve this is if we start turning on each other. We start turning on the superintendent or the directors or administrators or what I've seen lately, unfortunately, veteran teachers point the fingers at, you know, some of the newer teachers. I've had a new teacher that I ran into last week say she's starting to feel uncomfortable in the building she's in because of everything that's going on. We need to get through this together. We just survived a pandemic, global pandemic, and we're here. Uh, we're still dealing with it, but we survived it. We're here. There is a lot of issues that we need to deal with. And this is very important. I can look around the room here, like look at the screen, my other two colleagues. Each and every one of us care about teachers and respect our teachers. So the problem is not with the board. The problem, and I know the presentation earlier said that this is a national and a statewide issue, stuff like that, you know, but this is Dearborn. You know, I'd like to think that in Dearborn, we can do better. So just to wrap up, Mr. Malakal, Dr. Malakal, I'm sorry, Dr. Malakal, if you have any answers, if we have to get to, you know, I don't wanna get myself in trouble here. If we have to get to, you know, talking negotiations earlier than later, if we, and whatever you can come up, I would welcome it to start that discussion of somehow, some way, the, the compensation issue with our, with our educators, with our teachers is equitable for veteran teachers and new teachers. Still give you the power and your HR department to go out there and, you know, find the teachers that we need, fill the positions that are vacant right now, but at the same time, if you can come up with something, I welcome it. How, how do we deal with this? I wish I had the answers. I'm one of those person, if I don't speak up unless I have answers, I don't have answers for something like this. And I did today and last week speak with my colleagues and it's not gonna be an easy one to solve, but I'm sure we'll get through it. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Mozop.
Thank you, Trustee Barry. I echo all of your comments. You and I and Dr. Malakal actually met that March of twenty twenty meeting just before we shut down and we talked to Dr. Malakal about the, um, exit interviews that we were reading. And we were concerned then and we're still concerned. The, the comments tonight obviously are saddening to me, um, but they're not new. Uh, the culture and morale is something that needs to be immediately addressed. I do understand that we're in the middle of pandemic. Teachers, students, families are going through a lot. And, um, but we really need to look into ways of lessening the stress on teachers. And what I mean by that is that we keep obviously preaching, you know, here and we talk about how great our teachers are. But I believe that we, in addition to the negotiations and compensations, we need to talk about the most basic things that keep employees at an organization. I work for, and I'm not trying to preach here, but I work for a healthcare system that has also its weaknesses uh, when it comes to employees. But they have an amazing thing that I learned at their orientation two years and a, and a half ago about speak up culture. That if you do see something wrong, that you have the right to speak up and that you will not be retaliated against. And what I heard today about a former teacher who always is afraid to speak up is very, very concerning to me. We can find so many other ways of valuing our teachers and staff other than money. Now, money is very important and we need to pay our teachers equitably. But I do believe that we can do better in other means. Uh, some ideas that I'd like to throw around that the district and administration can look into uh, for ways to give our staff and teachers discounts to, uh, local, uh, stores, local groceries, local events, uh, to work with the city, to offer wellness, uh, memberships to our staff at a discounted rate. And most importantly, obviously in the classroom, of making sure that they focus at best at their job, which is instruction. And that that administrative work to be cut or to be kept at a minimum. To be flexible, like for example, we heard today about switching to Zoom. That's, that's a great way to start. Teachers don't have to come to a location and, and gather to hear a speaker when they can actually do it from home and they have that luxury of flexibility. And I'm sure there are so many different creative ideas of making sure that our teachers are valued, but I'm concerned about the culture and the morale. So I would like this body to look into, um, getting a, uh, third party to look into those exit surveys that we've had over the past two years and ways to improve the morale and culture. And as well as this allegation of retaliation against teachers who speak up, that needs to stop, um, if that's happening and that needs to be investigated. So I, again, my colleagues and Trustee Barry, I, I, nobody can deny how valuable our teachers and our staff to us. They are the backbone of this district. They run the district. We do spend, I think approximately eighty-six percent of our budget on teachers and staff and obviously wages for, for people who work here. So we're highly intensive labor organization and we need to make sure that these people are appreciated, that they are feeling great and that they do great things at what they do. So I would, I would love to see some kind of an advisory committee, but again, this needs to be solved at its core. And thank you, President Thorpe and my colleagues.
One thing that we've talked about for years, um, like the board's role and, and our role is to hire and evaluate the superintendent, set policies. And it's always been a, a tender subject about, uh, a staff. Because on one hand, we want staff to be able to feel free to, to come to us when there's issues, if they're not being resolved through the normal chain of command, and let us have those conversations with the administrators uh, and the superintendent so that we can ask, uh, for that information and then we just hold that in confidence as to those that are, are reaching out to us. So we've said it in the past and will continue to say it, that, uh, please let us know when there are issues, uh, whether it's something that you, um, if you feel comfortable with an email, if you see us at a different school events, uh, but come up to us and, and really let us know how things are going because we really do care about the employees. We heard over and over in those comments about perseverance the last couple of years and whether it was in education or any other per, uh, profession. We've all had to persevere over the last couple of years and we need to be able to continue supporting each other uh, and for the betterment of our whole community. All right, uh.
President Thorpe, can I make a comment too?
Can you keep it under ninety seconds before we have to extend the meeting again?
Sure.
All right.
Yeah, I would just say, you know, um, I look at myself as extremely ethical and I would just say if there's anybody that has been retaliated against, please bring it forward. We have protocols. Um, and we have policy that, um, I, cause I don't tolerate that whatsoever, uh, with anyone. So I just want everyone to be aware that that will not be anything that I tolerate or, uh, promote. And if someone feels retaliated against, they should bring that forward. We have policy and protocol to handle it. But there's no re, you know, there's no reason why anyone should feel that way. And we will continue to support staff. At the same token, I will also say that, um, we will, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about compensation, um, as trustees have mentioned, but we also have to protect the long-term stability of the district. And what I'm gonna tell you is that we've got one-time money and then we've got long-term money and we all know the times that we've had trouble with the budget. And so we're gonna be smart about it to protect students and to value teachers and to value all staff. Uh, I believe that every time we've gotten additional compensation from the state or the federal, we have always given back to our staff. We've just done that. That's just, we've been fair about that and we're gonna continue to do that. But I would just say that I'm not gonna tolerate any behaviors that are, um, you know, uh, not in alignment with the policies and the core values of Dearborn schools. And I encourage people to come forward with specific things if that's the way they feel. Um, but we will address them and at the same token, we want all staff to, to feel va- valued. I will also say.
Dr. Malakal, we, we need to pause.
Motion to extend the meeting fifteen minutes.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Barry, supported by Trustee Mozop. Roll call, please.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Deambrosio?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Mozop, yes. Trustee Petlicov?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President Thorpe?
Yes. Dr. Malakal, you went over that ninety seconds. Do you need more time?
Yeah, okay, sorry about that. And I, it would've been better if I was sitting next to you, right? So, um, the other thing though is we do have to address the reality that we are in a teacher and a staff shortage. That's just the truth. Um, and so we've had to negotiate in our contracts to be competitive and we're gonna continue to do that. And I know sometimes it may not feel fair, but the reality is, is that when it comes down to it, I wanna have certified teachers in the classroom. And so we gotta balance, uh, what we're doing. And again, we, every time we've negotiated for exemptions to bring people in higher, for example, special education is the he, the biggest, um, shortage in the state. And so every time we've negotiated for that, we've also given money to our employees and our faculty. And they probably deserve more, to be honest, and I recognize that. And Dr. Rice talked about it at the state conference, um, you know, years ago really is where the issue was, uh, when teachers were not valued on a national and state level. And it was, you know, the fall guy for what's going on in society. And that's not the truth. I, I'm a teacher. I'm always gonna be a teacher. I value the teachers. And you know what? We're gonna advocate for our teachers. We're gonna advocate for our students. And what I heard tonight is advocating for them and I wanna continue to do that. And we will. We're gonna, you know what? We're gonna figure this out. I, the, the most challenging time in my life, and President Barry, you were, you were there during the Whitmore Bowl situation, uh, when you were president. And now President Thorpe was there. And I, I guess what I would just say is this, is we have differing opinions and we have differing values maybe as to how we're approaching things, but we're all in this together. The c- the pandemic, no one wanted this pandemic. And the only way I see us getting through it is working together. And that's my philosophy and I'm gonna continue to do that. And I'm willing to take the, the criticism. I have no problem with that. Okay. And I'm willing to address it and I'm willing to make improvements. No problem. But the reality is, is that the only way we're gonna get through this is together. And I think, uh, we have to stick together and try, and try to work with each other to get, continue to do it and continue to value our employees. And that's what I'm planning to do. And I appreciate the support of the board and, um, the support of the community, the teachers, the staff. And tonight, look what we just had. We had two national blue ribbon schools that we talked about. We also had Pear Pros that came up. We had teachers. We have outstanding people in the community. So I, I felt like the need to, to, to get into this conversation because of it, where it was going. But, um, I respect opinions and I would just say that, you know, if, if there's any issues or anything, we will address it and we'll work together to do that. And I thank all our teachers.
President Thorpe, just quickly, um, Ms. Martin, you thanked your colleagues and I'd like to thank you especially personally for helping my son Omar in speech. He has improved tremendously in fifth grade and now that he's in style, he's always remembering you. So thank you.
Due to the time. Oh, what, who's got, who's got their hand up? Trustee Watts. Go for it.
So I took a couple of notes down and there was a lot of commonality from what I heard from the teachers. And number one, I heard that they love teaching. And I don't think anyone's going into teaching because of the money. And they also love their students. You do it for the passion. You don't do it for the recognition or for the lotions that you get at Christmas time. You do it for the thank you cards or you do it for when they come back as students, as older students and they come back to thank you. But I also hear that they're exhausted and they're tired. And I think looking at this as a big picture, it's, I, I see a lack of communication, that they wanna be part of the process. They wanna be part of the decision-making. So I think we need to go back to the root and say, okay, if this is a lack of communication, what steps can we do to make sure that our teachers are here, are being heard, are being seen and are part of the school system as a family, cause they're an extension of our family. So I think going forward, you know, whether it was through the GSRP program, it was the Pear Pros, and we heard from teachers, we heard from OT, we heard from special ed, I don't think that there was anyone that we haven't heard from and any extension. So I think as a board, we need to go through again and say, okay, how do we, we say we value, but how are we showing that? What steps are we taking that there's no doubt in our mind that if anybody were to look at our schools, they would say, yes, this board values our teachers. And I think that's what we need to have as our rule of thumb is, how are we valuing our teachers? We might say it, but what steps are we taking? So that's something I think we all need to keep in mind because like Trustee Barry was saying, you don't do it for the money. You do it for the passion, but you do it for the recognition and for feeling val- validated. So thank you.
Any additional comments? Trustee Barry?
You know, every time the word retaliation or fear culture comes up, we get defensive. We shouldn't. If one teacher, if one employee feels that way, then it's on us to figure out a way to take that feeling away. We gotta figure out a way, I mean, I'm looking at right now, we're, uh, Trustee, President Thorpe and Trustee Aden Mozop and I are going to the annual leadership conference for the state. And I'm looking at the classes there, trying to figure out if maybe there's something there that can help us, help me, help, you know, come back with something. But it's on us to figure out a way to make those feelings go away. One teacher, if one custodian, if one, uh, you know, cafeteria worker feels that way, we gotta figure out a way. We gotta approach them. We, they're not gonna come to us and say, one, two, three. They're just gonna come in, punch their clock, you know, God bless what they do every day. But when we hear from one person, we just say, that's just a troublemaker and eventually they'll go away. That's gotta stop. We gotta figure out a way. We got some intelligent people leading this district. If we can't figure out a way to make that feeling go away. She stood here. She stood here and told us. She's probably one of the best social workers in southeastern Michigan. She stood here, told us the way she feels. We kept keep saying, come talk to us about this. We need to figure out a way to make her feelings, whatever it is she's been causing to feel that way, we need to make it go away. That's all I got, President Thorpe.
All right. The next item was going to be the special report on the administrative evaluation. So I would ask the board, along with Dr. Chokol and Dr. Malakal, is this something we would want to still go through tonight or would we prefer to wait till November, uh, when it might be a, a shorter meeting? It doesn't seem like this is anything pressing. This was, I think this was a request for information, uh, but I don't know if it was anything that, that people wanted to, to get information on.
No, but it's a fairly, I, after I looked at it, it's a fairly short.
Well, it depends on questions.
But questions is the only thing that could.
I, I would too. Let's defer to the next meeting.
All right, is, is that, are, are people good with that?
I'm good with that.
All right, we're gonna defer that report then till our next meeting. Thank you very much for that. And, uh, Trustee Mozop, that takes us to our next item.
Sure. Action items, uh, special consideration of an item. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
Number nineteen, we know needs to be pulled for a roll call.
Okay.
We have supplement too, so.
I have question.
We got one item on a supplement. You've got a question on an, an item?
Yes.
Do you need to pull though?
Uh, no, no.
Okay.
It's, it's a very quick question.
Which, which number?
Four and five.
Number's four and five. All right. Any other questions for any action items? Anything else that's gonna need to be pulled?
I'm sorry, it's three, three and four, three and, the computers, three and four.
Okay.
But we're not pulling it.
No, no, we're not pulling it. Just a question about if it's part of the consortium.
All right, so the questions on three and four, we're gonna pull nineteen for a roll call. Anything additional? Trustee Mozop, if you could state the.
Sure. So we have twenty-one items, right?
Yes.
Okay. Move the action items, one through twenty, uh, twenty-four?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, sorry, so along night, to be approved as recommended on this agenda. Except nineteen.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Barry, supported by Trustee Deambrosio. Trustee Mozop, um.
Uh, just a quick question and maybe Tom can answer this quickly. Is this part of the consortium so we didn't have to go through uh, the bid process for the PCs?
Yeah, both of them are dealing with REMC pricing.
Okay, thanks. That's all I have.
All right, no additional questions then? If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Deambrosio? Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Mozop, yes. Trustee Petlicov?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President Thorpe?
Yes. Before you do the summary, let's, um, go through number nineteen.
Sure. So number nineteen is a college one, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
So the resolution, um, move to approve the following resolution is documented by Board Report twenty-one dash thirty-seven. Uh, Henry Ford College through its duly authorized officers certify that Henry Ford College has met four of the five best practices in each category as required by section two thirty of PA sixty of twenty fifteen, the Education Amnesic Appropriations Act for fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, that, that, I'll give that one then to Trustee McDonald for the motion and Trustee, uh, Trustee Petlicov for the support. The one comment I'd make on this is that we normally try to keep business separate between the college and the P twelve, but this was a, a timing issue that it needed to be done before our next board meeting. And I have a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Deambrosio?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Mozop, yes. Trustee Petlicov?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President Thorpe?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, so summary?
Yes, please.
One, approval of warrants. Two, approval of award to Delta Network Services LLC. Three, approval of an award to Dell Computers and CDW GL System LLC. Four, approval and award to Procedo. Five, approval and award to Burlington English Inc. Six, approval and award to communities and schools. Seven, approval and award to Rosetta Stone LLC approval. Eight, approval of an amended award to Strength View Fitness LLC. Nine, approval of an award to Superior Text LLC. Ten, approval of an award to Curriculum Associates. Eleven, approval of ratification of contract with A-Land Construction. Twelve to fifteen, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P. twelve to fifteen, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P to twelve, sixteen, approval of financial statement, seventeen, approval of twenty, twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Superintendent Golds, eighteen, approval of Wayne Risa Parent Advisory Committee replacement, nineteen, approval of Henry Ford College stra- strategic value resolution, twenty, approval of, uh, donations, and twenty-one is approval of appointment of principal at Dearborn High School.
Before we bring up the new principal, I would ask for a motion to extend the meeting.
Motion to extend the meeting fifteen minutes.
Support.
Motion by trustee Barry and support by trustee Mosov, roll call.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee D'Ambrosio?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Mosov, yes, trustee Petlicov?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President Thorpe?
Yes, all right, Dr. Chokol?
So the position of principal at Dearborn High was created by the promotion of Mr. Adam Martin and I would like to invite Mrs. Zainab Jabril at, to come to the podium as well as, uh, Mr. Mark Rumel to approach, please. We, we believe very much in a team approach and would like to congratulate Mrs. Jabril on her appointment.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know it's been a long evening, President Thorpe, um, trustees, Dr. Chokol, Dr. Malako. I'm extremely humbled and honored to be here tonight. Um, I've served the district in many different roles, starting from nineteen ninety-seven, um, I was hired as a teacher. I served, um, I, I taught different levels. I became the graduation specialist, um, when the district first opened up that position at Etzel Ford. Then I became the assistant principal at Etzel Ford for four years, um, and that is when, um, we were a priority school. That was a lot of work, but it was a tremendous learning experience for me and I, I appreciated that time that I served at Etzel Ford. From there, I went to Dearborn High as an assistant principal for one year and, um, and then I was appointed as principal at O.L. Smith, um, five years ago. I stood here before you five years ago and I promised to exceed expectations and I believe that I did. I promised to do the same thing again, um, at Dearborn High. I'm excited to return to Dearborn High as principal, um, and I appreciate your trust in me. I'm invested in this community, I was born and raised in Dearborn. I'm the product of Dearborn Schools myself, I went to Henry Ford, Woodworth and Fortson, um, my three sons who are, um, the loud ones back there. Also are the product of Dearborn Public Schools, they all have college degrees and enjoy successful careers that I'm very proud of and that's because of the foundation that they received here in Dearborn Public Schools. My commitment is to provide that same opportunity to all students, um, that come into my doors in any building that I serve at and now it will be Dearborn High School. And also, um, my grandkids will soon be entering Dearborn Public Schools. So, um, yeah, I'm very invested in the Dearborn, um, public school system. Last but not least, I have some acknowledgements. I first want to thank God for the blessing of success that he's bestowed upon me. I also want to thank my mom who, um, left us many years ago, may God have mercy on her soul. But I am the person that I am because of, uh, the values that she instilled in me. Both she and my dad, uh, demonstrated what it is to be a public servant. And, um, I, we learned that at a young, a young age at our house. My, both my parents led and served in this community and I'm honored to follow in their footsteps. I also want to thank my dad who, um, imparts his wisdom and guidance on me and anytime I'm having difficult moments, he has true wisdom and always helps me see the light, um, within every situation that I come across. I seek his guidance as do many people in our community. I also want to thank my brother, sister, my sister-in-law, my brother-in-law, my niece, my nephews, um, my three adult sons and their wives, uh, for their unwavering support. I'm extremely dedicated to my job and I wouldn't be able to do that without the strong system that I have at home. Instead of them holding against me the fact that I can't be a traditional mom or a grandma, they step up, they do what needs to be done. They take things off my plate and free me up to serve my students and my families. I don't usually get the opportunity to thank them, but I, I do appreciate everything, um, that they do for me to free me up to do a good job that I do at the schools. I also would like to thank Dr. Malako, um, and my, um, current and future executive directors, Dr. Chokol and Ms. Faraj for the support that they've provided me, um, throughout my years at Smith and prior to that. Last but not least, I'd like to thank my Viking family, I'm very saddened to leave them. I want to thank my students, my parents and especially the hardworking staff at O.L. Smith. We really built a strong team together and I know that they will continue to build on the foundation that we established together as a team. They are Viking strong and that's the Viking way, they will continue with the Viking tradition, I have no doubt about that. I'm excited to move on to Dearborn High School and reconnect with some of the families that I've already developed relationships with, um, in the year that I was there. And I know that many of my Smith students will also be, um, going with me to Dearborn High, so I'm excited about that as well. I want to thank all of you for putting your trust in me. And once again, I will exceed, um, expectations at Dearborn High. I know that Dearborn High has a strong legacy of excellence. They have a strong foundation there and I know that my role is to build on that, um, the, the legacy of excellence that they have with athletics, with academic achievement, the strong climate and culture that they have. So, um, I, my, my goal is to build on the foundation that they have. And then I would like to introduce Mark Rumel, who was, um, my assistant principal. He started with me as an intern my first year at O.L. Smith and, um, I knew that he was a perfect fit when I hired him to be assistant principal. So I will turn it over to Dr. Chokol or Mark.
Thank you and the entire Jabril family, we appreciate you and congratulations again. At this time, we would also like to announce that Mr. Rumel will be the interim principal at O.L. Smith to continue the, uh, solid work that has been accomplished by the entire staff there, both instructional and non-instructional, as well as the collaboration of the administrative team, so, Mr. Rumel.
Thank you, and I would also like to thank the Dearborn Public Schools for their investment in me since kindergarten through now. And I would like to thank you all for your marathon of a night in service to the Dearborn Schools. So I will keep it short and to the point. Five years ago, the Smith community did welcome Mr. Bril and myself on as the administration team and I'm very proud of what we've accomplished in the five years that we've been there. Uh, I would be lying to say that, uh, I'm not sad that Mr. Bril is going, but I'm very, very excited to continue the, the, the great things that we're doing at O.L. Smith and we have the best team in Dearborn and I'm very, very excited to lead the best middle school in Dearborn. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to both of you. Next item, please.
Discussion item, uh, policy bylaws updates, policy six twenty, sixty-two forty. This is a new, uh, policy, uh, introducing budget stabilization fund and bylaw zero one six seven dot three, public participation of board meetings, Dr. Glenn Malako and Mr. David Mastonin.
Now, I know it says it's normally thirty minutes, can you do it in three?
Yes, absolutely. Good evening, board members, uh, the policy committee did meet, uh, both of these policies were presented to the committee for review. They did review them, make suggestions, those changes were added in, those changes were shared with the entire board through board briefs for both of those, both of these policies, one being a new policy, the, uh, stabilization fund, the authorization of a stabilization fund is a new policy. The bylaw is an update to an existing bylaw to clarify language, uh, that was in there, that was a bit outdated. As required, we bring both of those policies to the board as a full at this meeting, for a discussion and, uh, barring any objections from the board, uh, they will be brought to the board at the next meeting for formal approval.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item is Board of Education Business Acknowledgement of Correspondence.
I don't know if everyone received these orange cards today, so that's one correspondence that we received. Uh, I know there's been some emails, um, in fact, we found one email that was only sent to about half the board and I found out about it, uh, after another communication, so please make sure you're sharing all the, the emails and things so we're able to, to get everything addressed.
Next item is Board Member Co- Committee and Organization Reports.
I don't believe we had any committee meetings for this group. All right, next item.
Board Member Superintendent Commentary. I, I, I have commentary and I'm going to keep it very short. October is National, um, Anti-Bullying Awareness Month and, uh, this body has passed a resolution back in twenty nineteen addressing that and I'm, uh, grateful to see some schools, um, embracing that and, uh, doing some anti-bullying activities. But I, I, I wish that the entire district does that. We can always use a lot of kindness, especially that we've heard and that teachers are so much under stress and as well as, uh, students from the pandemic stress that we have. On November second, there will be an election for our municipal elections, uh, we will be electing a new mayor. At least three new council members, um, all, all seven are up as well as, uh, voting on the city, uh, mileage renewal and very important, uh, race, which is a commission race to elect nine members to the commission for our city. So I encourage everybody to vote, vote early if you can, voting has started already and encourage your neighbors and families and friends to do the same and exercise their civic duty. Those are all the comments that I had.
Any, trustee D'Ambrosio?
Yeah, this is also, uh, National Fire Prevention Month, so, uh, Station Two is open for your children to go and learn about getting out of a house if there's a fire, so take your children over, have some fun on the fire engines, so, thank you.
Station Two is the one on Outer Drive?
Outer Drive.
Okay. All right, additional comments?
I'd also like to add that October is National Principals Month, so, uh, thank you to all of our building administrators who, uh, lead strong and work with all of the, uh, the teachers and the rest of the staff on everything that our students need, so thank you.
Trustee Watts?
Um, so last week was Teacher Appreciation, um, it was World Teacher Appreciation Day and it was also, um, Mental Health Awareness Day. And, um, I know that there was one blue card that had mentioned the increase in anxiety in teachers and I think that as the pandemic continues on waning every day, that we need to make sure that we are putting in supports for our teachers so they can recognize how they can also have, um, self-care because I know they're always putting probably their students' needs first. So something to think about, so.
Any other comments before we move on? Next?
Request for information or future agenda items.
Trustee Mosov?
I would like, uh, a report on engagement of parents on Schoology, to see how many parents are engaged, um, if we can get some counts, as well as how do we, I, I think I spoke to, uh, Mr. Addy before this meeting and he said that number is very low. So, uh, I would like to see how we can, um, promote it, uh, do perhaps some trainings for parents virtually on how to access, uh, Schoology or the other, uh, programs that we currently have like Parent Connect as well, so. I, I'd like that information to be presented, thank you.
Okay. Trustee Petlicov?
I noticed that we, um, are having some issues because we changed the times of our school bus pickup drop-off um, with, with the, the pushing of the, um, with after-school sports programs. So I'd like an update on that as well as we're moving forward, um, into the spring because we know that there will be a heightened amount of athletics occurring, um, during those months as well and, um, how are we going to address this? I don't know, I can't recall if this was a conversation we had when we decided to shift our school times by half an hour, that it would impact the busing situation for the JV sports, apparently is what's being impacted. And I certainly don't want to see our students being pulled out early just in order to get a bus to attend an, uh, a school event at another location. So I would like to, um, know how that is progressing and how we're working on that.
But before that, we need a motion to extend the meeting by fifteen.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Made by trustee Barry, supported by trustee D'Ambrosio, sorry.
Trustee D'Ambrosio?
Yes.
Are you voting for trustee D'Ambrosio?
If it's okay with you, I can vote for you.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Mosov, yes, trustee Petlicov?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President Thorpe?
Yes. I already had, had, uh, send an email over to Mr. Matur, he's provided some information on that. I think the biggest issue that we're running into with that one is just the shortage of, of drivers.
Yeah, that's what I.
But we'll, we'll get the information to you, make sure everyone has that one. Trustee Barry did.
Sorry, but just in addition to, uh, trustee Petlicov's request, I want to see how effective the nine o'clock for elementary start. It seems, uh, some parents obviously said it's too late, I have to find somebody to stay with my child until when I go to work early, if they go way earlier. So I, I'd like to look into that and what complications would it make if we shift back, this one hour back, but.
Well, then we'd also want to look at how it, how it's impacted the other two school levels.
Yes.
Yeah, we can't do one without, uh.
Worth, uh, worth looking at, I, I think we've heard great things about the high school starting at least thirty, is it forty minutes later?
Thirty-five minutes later.
Yeah.
Trustee Barry, did you have one?
Yes, sir, I actually got two of them, uh, last year, we did an evaluation of our s- three sports programs.
High school?
High school, yes, sir, yeah.
Was it for the, was it for everything or just football?
It was just football last year. Uh, it was, it was no cost to the district, it was a generous, uh, gentleman and, uh, community that paid for them. It sounds like we're a little bit tonight and I'm seeing it at the other two buildings that the, that, that evaluation, uh, was followed and it paid off big dividends for us. The gentleman stepped up to pay again, I wonder if it's too late to do an evaluation this year? Uh, again, it would be no cost to the district or possibly start looking at some of the other programs because I know, uh, there are issues and, you know, so issues do come up here and there, but if that worked, let's, let's use it as a, uh, so I, I'd like to see, I'd like to see it in writing, you know, if the high school football programs followed what the recommendations were and that's why we're seeing some of the, the payoffs here, that's one. The other one, uh, I guess would be for Tom Walls here. For the school year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, I'd like to see a detailed of the billing from, uh, Lusk and Albertson. Yes, twenty, that'd be last, just last school year, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. If you have any questions, just let me know on that, thank you, that's all I have.
Is that for one or two school years? Cause we're in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year right now, so are you meaning the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year?
Or twenty twenty to twenty?
Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
All right, so that one school year, two years ago.
What's that?
One school year, two years ago.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Yes, thank you. Well, you know what, let me, uh, so yeah, it would be that school year. As long as it covers twenty twenty, so it's twenty nineteen and twenty twenty.
So the last two school years.
All of twenty twenty. School year twenty nineteen will include all of twenty twenty. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that, I appreciate that. Trustee Watts, did I see your hand up?
Yeah, to see if we can piggyback off of what trustee Barry said in terms of, um, with the athletic programs. I wanted to see if we had any data in or if we can receive data about the percentage of student athletes that go on to play in the college level. Um, and then also, um, with security issues taken into consideration, to know, um, in terms of buildings, how many lockdowns have happened, um, within the last, um, maybe a couple of years outside of COVID, um, in terms of school buildings had because of, um, armed robberies in the area.
Trustee McDonald?
We had several, uh, people mentioned tonight about, uh, music and, uh, the, the band programs and such. And I know that it had been cut in the middle school because of lack of participation. And I'm wondering if there's a way that we can improve the participation, how the numbers, um, where they're offered are, um, falling and what we can do to extend those, because I think it is vitally important.
Trustee Watts?
Cause I was gonna mention this, that I, uh, Dr. Chokol has been putting together some data about the arts and all the various programs. So maybe, Dr. Chokol, that's something that you can add on to that report that you had emailed out to myself.
Yep, I can, uh, I'll look at the current report that was done and, and possibly expand that one section.
Can that report share?
Thank you.
Be shared with?
And then have that shared with everybody, yes.
Thank you.
All right, any other requests for information? So that was a lot of requests, uh, more than usual, so eh, l- let us know. It didn't sound like there's anything that's too, too big in there. Um, but I would just ask the board to, to have patience as the, the administration works through all those different items. Next item?
Future meeting dates, Monday, October eighteenth, H F C Board of Trustees Meeting, seven P M. At the Administrative Services and Conference Center, Henry Ford College in the Rosenau Boardroom. Monday, November eighth, twenty twenty-one, P to twelve, Board of Education Meeting, seven P M. At the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. Monday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, H F C Board of Trustees Meeting, seven P M. At the Administrative Services and Conference Center, Henry Ford College in the Rosenau Boardroom.
There is an audit, uh, committee meeting for the college next Monday?
Yes, there is an audit committee meeting for the college next Monday before our meeting.
I, I think I believe I am on it.
Yes, and I forget who the third is. I think it's trustee Dambrosio, but we'll make sure that the college sends that one out again, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that.
Anything else? All right, we're adjourned.
Thank you.